All right, good evening. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting of March 26, 2018. The time is 7:30 PM. We begin with roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett. Councilman Gaddings.
Here.
Councilor Grafstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Sultis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an indication to be given by Councilor Grafstein and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Excuse me. I'll get to it.
Okay. We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Can I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Corbett from tonight's regular meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilor Corbett from this meeting.
Very good. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Approval of the agenda. We have one addition tonight. Could I please have a motion from council to add an item under reports? So it would be Item D2 from the Assistant City Manager regarding pending litigation. Will someone please make that motion to add it to the agenda?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we add to the agenda Item D2, a report from the city attorney under special litigation.
Thank you, sir. Is there support? Your Honor. Mr. Sultis.
Second, please.
Any discussion on adding an item under D2, Reports from the Assistant City Ma—excuse me—the Assistant City Attorney regarding pending litigation? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries, and that is added. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, we can continue the meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone to address city council on any subject, so please come up and speak to the microphone. Please speak close to the microphone. It's not required, but it'd be helpful if you could give your name and address and any affiliation. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Pardon me, I'm a little bit nervous here.
Me too.
My name is Tina Spencer. I live on West Hudson. Been a citizen of Madison Heights for 43 years. I would like to address the cutbacks from the fire department. We had a fire at the house at 344 West Hudson. If there would've been more firemen that would've been there, it would've been contained. And I was told this by one of the fire department. There was only six on duty that night, four north station, two at the south. Two at the south is one showed up. The other four, two were at Beaumont already on a call, and the other two were on route to Beaumont for a call. As a citizen of Madison Heights, I feel that—and I apologize to everybody for what I was about to say—but I feel that the fire department is the most important part of the city, of any city. And I find it very, very unacceptable for this city to cut back the fire department because if your house burns, that's on—you know, that's—and you've cut back this fire department? That's unacceptable.
Well, I have good news for you. It was—they were cut about 10 years ago, but just two weeks ago, this city council agreed to hire two additional firefighters to help with exactly the issue you're talking about. So times are changing because property values are coming back, and so you're right. This is the top issue that we're looking at. Public safety, police, and fire response is the most urgent need. Honestly, it's the only thing we need to do right. So we are listening to you. We've been listening to other residents, and we share your concern. And so as long as the budget is adopted, starting July 1st, potentially, we could have those two new firefighters and paramedics in our city. It's not—it's not the best we can be, but it's a step in the right direction, and I just want you to feel a little bit more secure. And I want you to feel that we do understand what you're saying, and our interests are aligned.
Well, the fire department and the police department have always, always—when you call for something, when I've ever had to call for 43 years I've lived here, they're there. There's no—my daughter lived in Hazel Park, and it took them two blocks to get over to her, 35 minutes.
That's unacceptable.
That's unacceptable. But for our—our fire department to be cut and not have enough personnel to handle an emergency?
You're right. If it's—
You know, like I said, I've lived here 43 years. I don't want to have to move and try to find another city that cares about the residents in order to have enough—enough people to take care of it.
Your point is well taken, and we share it. And we're putting our money where our mouth is.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Scott, please.
May I? I'm sorry. Can I please get your name again?
Tina Spencer.
Tina. First of all, I want to tell you how sorry we all are to hear about that tragedy. It just got to me. I really had tears in my eyes when I saw the pictures of those flames. And I so apologize for not having the adequate fire staff that we were supposed to have. I have been sitting here for many, many years pleading, getting more firefighters. And I'm not trying to make myself a hero. This is to try and help you understand because I feel so bad about this tragedy in your family. I don't know what would I do if I lost my house. I wanted to tell you that I've always supported firefighters. I've always supported maintaining a reasonable amount where everybody could be assisted. I know there were circumstances at night where they weren't available. I humbly apologize because I represent the city, just like everybody else here. And I am so sorry this happened. And we—I was just elated at the fact when we had our goal session, and one of the things that came out was the importance of public safety and staffing the firefighter the way it should be. And I believe that that's coming. Unfortunately, it's not too in time for you, and I humbly apologize. I think this is awful tragedy. But we are making big steps in order to help this situation where there will be adequate firefighting for you and for everybody in this city. And I just want to tell you how sorry we are to hear this. Thank you. You're welcome. I do want to make a little correction here. That wasn't my house. It was actually my daughter's boyfriend. Okay, I'm sorry. Who lives next door to me. And if—I know my time is real up here, but real quick, he could not make it tonight, the gentleman whose house it is. He just got citations today. He's—he's been working his behind off on this house. He's got everything cleared out of the inside of it. He's rebuilding this house because he wants to still live in the city. That's good. But he got citations today for stuff still. He's got a truck and—a trailer in the driveway. And that shouldn't happen, and I think we need to address that immediately. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Tina.
I'm very sorry.
The meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address city council?
I just had to say something. It's ridiculous.
Come on up, Gloria. The floor is yours. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Gloria Moore at 27368 Garrett Mall. Friends of the Madison Heights area senior citizens is having another third Tuesday meeting this April, April 17th, at seven o'clock over at Wilkinson Middle School. And beverages and snacks are on us, and everybody is welcome to come. Also, we're having a bowling fundraiser over at Bowl One Lanes in—at 1639 East Troy, East 14 Mile Road in Troy. And Myers has given us five $100 gift certificates to raffle off. Wilkinson Middle School PTO has promised gift baskets, and we're going to do a 50/50 raffle, which still might be—might get a couple more sponsors. And also with Donna's Christmas land and Friends of the Madison Heights area senior citizens is going to be having another community barbecue. Donna's Christmas land is taking the primary part on it. Apparently, I give boring barbecues, and she's more exciting. And so we're at Rosie's Park at the East Hales entrance at July 14th, from 11 o'clock to seven. And it's food, raffles, games, face painting. And we've been having catalogs on the flyer since—it's not very well decorated. That's because we don't have the sponsors yet to decorate it with. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Richard Clark, 29328 Howard Avenue, Madison Heights, Michigan. I was not going to come tonight until I read an article in the Troy Somerset Gazette. Trafficking sees no way out, especially with spring break coming. You probably don't think of Oakland or Macomb Counties as hotbeds for human sex trafficking, but it happens all over the world, and over 20 million people are caught in the modern slavery. The Michigan abolitionist project, short for MAP, or MAP is short for that, was at the Troy Police Station last Tuesday evening with a program for those interested in learning about the problems and what citizens can do to help. Most of the attendees, it would be safe to say, were mothers of young girls, and they'd heard stories about young girls being enticed into the sex trafficking game at their local malls. For example, a friend's young granddaughter has been approached twice at the mall about getting some pictures to become a model. MAP Executive Director Kathy Maitland pointed out that the average age of a young sex slave is 13 years old. And the two biggest ways these young women, most in the 12-, 13-, and 14-year age group, fall into this horrific lifestyle is through an older boyfriend or social media kids from broken homes who have been abused or are runaways, are more at risk in believing the lies the slave trafficking recruiters tell them. I just wanted to get the word out for the Easter break because so many kids do go to the malls to hang out.
Thank you very much. Meeting is open to the public. Would anyone else like to address city council? Good evening, welcome.
I'm Donna Mitchell, 27440 Harcourt. Mr. Hartwell, I'd like to thank you for putting me in contact with the Chief of Police today for one of our new adventures, as I refer to them. I also want to let everyone know that this past Saturday, we had our Easter egg hunt. We had 125 kids. I'm getting emotional.
That's great.
That's amazing. Absolutely amazing. The recognition from this city is unbelievable to me. I cannot express that enough. You helped me, Margine. I can't even begin, girl. You are amazing. I just want to let you guys know.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go sit back down.
Thank you. Donna, stay there. You deserve some praise. You've given your heart to so many young children. I mean, you've made your neighborhood a place of pride, and that's spread throughout the city. So the least we can do is recognize you and thank you and put you into connections with more people because you have something really special inside of you where you say, "I want to do, I want to do, I want to do, I want to do." So thank you so much for, you know, being brave and figuring out the logistics and contacting people and then actually performing these wonderful things for our children. Thank you. You're a really good person, and from the bottom of my heart—and I know others—we really care about you, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one thing.
Yes.
Last week, I listened to the council meeting at home. The sound was perfect. I come in here, and I can't hear it. The sound in here is terrible.
Do you think it's—the speakers aren't loud enough, or maybe it's background noise, white noise buzzing?
I don't know what it is, but it's very hard to hear, if not impossible.
We'll continue to test it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
May I address Ex-Councilman Clark? As you know, you and I are blessed with a little disability not to hear as good as we should had we were younger. And I have been talking to Ben about this for a long time. I have a hard time hearing. I think, like Dave said, I think a lot of the microphone is not projecting enough. Maybe there's echoes in here. And so this has been addressed, and I know that Ben is very aware of it. And we are working so hard because we need to hear every word that's being said. It's so important, all the people that come here. And I thank you for bringing that up because I've had a long difficulty with it as well. Thank you, Rich.
Thanks. Would anyone else like to address city council? Well, I'd like to invite a very special guest with us tonight, Congressman Sander Levin, who is our congressperson for the 9th district in Michigan. I don't know who it's more embarrassing for, but Mr. Levin was first elected to Congress in 1982, the year I was born. So you'll make fun of me, you'll make fun of Mr. Levin. But Mr. Levin has represented over, what, 30, 40 cities maybe during his career during Congress. But Sandy finds a way to come to Madison Heights quite frequently. His committee meetings are housed in Madison Heights at the Plumbers Hall. Mr. Levin hosts his summer family picnics in our parks. And it's such a relief that we have accessibility to our member of Congress. It's so important in public office. I mean, we serve others, and Mr. Levin has served us dutifully for years. We can call him anytime we need. The residents feel the same way. And tonight, we get to listen to the former chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, a current member of that board. And the floor is yours, Mr. Levin. No time limit. Please speak in the microphone. Don't wander around like—you're—because you're so animated, sir. But welcome to Madison Heights, Congressman Levin. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I feel very much at home here. I think the only problem is I don't have an address here. But I was driving here with Monica from our office, and Hannah is also here. And I reminisced a bit about how long I've had a chance to represent this city. It started when I was in the state senate, long ago. And Monica asked me, "Have I always represented Madison Heights?" And I proudly say, "Yes." So I want to start off by reminiscing a bit, okay? In 1994, we had a meeting here in Madison Heights with the Attorney General. And the issue was the COPS program, Community Police Program. And we sat around a table, and I'm not quite sure where. I don't think that room exists anymore.
It was in the senior center.
It was in the senior center.
On Januar, yes.
Were you there?
Yes, I was. I was photographing it, and it's—in my book, that photograph of Janet Reno.
Well, you know, I have a picture of—we found it, didn't we?
Yes, I have all kinds of photographs.
You call me Sandy, I'll call you Margine.
All right.
So Monica dug it out. The Attorney General was here, and the issue again was the COPS program. And this issue was raised. Why should the COPS program grants only be available to cities? What about groups of cities? And so we discussed it. And a result of that meeting was that we convinced the Attorney General that the law should be written so that consortia of communities could apply. I don't remember the chief here. At that time—I know Joe Sullivan from Ferndale was here. And as a result of that, when the legislation was about to come up, I went down to the Committee of Jurisdiction, and I did something you're not supposed to do. I wrote in the words "and consortia." Because of the meeting, you talked, Mayor, about the community and the importance of it, and you've heard comments, and I think it's wonderful you start with citizen comments. That idea came from that meeting here. And the first grant—and I—I wrote a letter, but I wasn't supposed to do anything beyond—I did not. The first consortium grant was granted to a group of communities here, including Madison Heights, and it was placed in Troy, as I remember. And what resulted from that was, I think, the continued effort of law enforcement in this area on a multi-community basis. So I just want to mention that in tribute to this community. And Joe B. Sullivan from Ferndale and a few others drove to Washington to celebrate the passage of the law with those two words in it. So actually, I—I was going to blow up this picture. It's in your book, this picture? Then I won't have to blow it up. Let's compare notes someday and see because it has a picture with the Attorney General.
Yes.
And I don't—this may be the person who was the chief of police here. Okay, so this is my report because we were able to provide money for the COPS program again. And I'll just quickly go through this. It wasn't easy because there were differences of opinion. And the president—and he complained when he signed it—said that he liked the defense part of it, but he did not like the domestic program parts. And I'll spell this out, and you can see why he didn't like it. Because we essentially did not agree with him and got a majority to move on. So there's a lot of opioid funding. There was common agreement. There wasn't any basic disagreement. And I think you know, talking to officials here, what the problem is in this city and every other city. So there is some beginning money. On transportation, we didn't really do fully what we should. About $44 billion in the bill for highway programs. And you requested some funding from the Federal Aid Committee, Oakland County, and received it. And I hope the citizens understand your enterprise to seek the funding. And as I understand it, as a result, there's going to be some some refunding of Stevenson Highway with the money that came because of your initiative. I mentioned the COPS program. The budget wanted to flat fund it, but we added to it. And I think it might be well if you take another look at the COPS program. It has some complexity to it. Let me just mention briefly about drug-free communities because some of you have been involved. It was—it was 25 years ago that Rob Portman and I—I think it was 20 years ago—he was on the Ways and Means Committee then. And we compared notes from Cincinnati that he represented and this area that I represented. And out of that came a bipartisan proposal to provide seed money for community anti-drug programs. And there now have been several thousand community anti-drug coalitions that have been funded. And the Madison Heights Community Family Coalition received funding from 2010 to 2015. It's now taking another look at how it would be structured. And if I might, I really think it's important that we all participate, especially now with the opioid problem, which we seem to not be aware that it was coming. Now, I'll just mention a few programs. Ly Heap, the president's budget proposed to be eliminated, and we did not accept that. And instead, it's been—the money has increased. And we don't have a breakdown by communities, but in 17, in McComb and Oakland, over 149,000 families received assistance for heating and air conditioning. The Community Development Block Grant—and every time I come, we talk about it. The president proposed it be eliminated. You received in $1,760,000 in CDPT monies. And I know there's some argument, why send money to Washington and have it returned? I think in part the answer is that we need to continue to emphasize the importance of And so while the money isn't huge and it's been reduced, I think it's a sign, a symbol, and a bit better than that, that Washington understands the importance of community involvement. I just—I guess I want to finish. The Community Services Block Grant, we continued funding for that, and it has a number of basic programs. And the budget of the administration suggests we eliminate it, and we said, "Why are we doing that?" So if I might—The Great Lakes, you don't border it, but the president suggested we eliminate it. I remember as a kid, no, as a parent, taking our four kids to swim in Lake St. Clair. I don't quite know how we got there because it was before 696, but somehow we did. And the Great Lakes began, as you know, to deteriorate, and it was unbelievable we would let that happen. And so while the administration's budget suggested we eliminate it, we didn't accept that. I want to finish by talking about the assistance in education, if I might. I've had the privilege of working with the two school districts here. They have very different tax bases. And the reason is just more a coincidence—it's—it's more than a coincidence, but in part it's a coincidence. When Lanfair was created, they took empty land across from 14 Mile Road. It was empty. And of course, eventually, the shopping center, the large shopping center, was built. So Lanfair has a stronger tax base than Madison. But the two—the two systems have worked hard to sustain themselves, and the Title I money is so critical to these two school districts. Lanfair as well as—as Madison, indeed. Lanfair received more Title I money in 1718 than did Madison, it's larger. And so the amount for Lanfair was $400,000. And so, the amount for Lanfair was $468,000 in Title I, providing programs for, mainly for kids who have not only special needs, but come to school without some of the advanced opportunities that other kids have. And the Madison School District received $386,000. So that's my report. We just passed this appropriations bill last week. It was one of the concrete accomplishments in a Congress that essentially is most of the time stalemate. So, Mr. Mayor and all of you on the council, I appreciate the chance. And we were talking, coming over about Section 8 housing. I will finish with this. This community was determined to receive some assistance for housing for seniors, way in advance of its time. And there's more provision here for seniors than in many, many communities of its size. And one named after someone who was so instrumental in this community. So, you kind of get me emotional. It's been my pleasure, and continues to be my pleasure, to be here. And at times, I felt, as I said at the beginning, I had everything but an address here. I walked more streets, I'll tell you a funny story, and I'll finish. I was going door-to-door here. And it was raining. And so, I came, knocked on a door. I remember the first door I ever knocked on was in Madison Heights. But this was some months later. It was raining, or actually, I think I was in Congress by that. And so, a very nice person invited me in and said, "You're cold and you look hungry." So I went in, and I left my raincoat there. And I didn't remember it until two blocks later. So, many decades later, if somebody tells you they have my raincoat, I'd like you back.
Thank you, Mr. Levin. Thank you very much. You've served, you've fought for so many issues that have had a direct impact on the residents of Madison Heights. I mean, you have fought for years for workers' rights. And Madison Heights is a very blue-collar town. I mean, we're a town of working-class men and women, plumbers, sheet metal workers, all the skilled trade workers. A third of our voters are members of the UAW. And so, the issues you fight for in Washington, D.C., impact the pocketbooks and the households in Madison Heights. We also know you've been a defender of Social Security, which is also very important to the residents of Madison Heights. Most of the seniors I meet, that's their only source of income. They would have nothing but for Social Security. And you and your colleagues have stood to protect that and to boost that. And that saves lives here in Madison Heights.
So let me just say a word about Social Security, because if I might, there was a desire to privatize it. And I was then ranking member on trade. And I continue to work on trade. In fact, Monica has helped me write many, many articles and briefs on the pending trade issue we have, which involves workers. But the leadership asked me to move from trade to Social Security when it was proposed to be privatized. And I decided, they said I should do that, because they thought I could provide leadership, which I think is the main, one of the main elements of public life. And so, I did that. And it was really interesting, Mayor, you talk about seniors and about Social Security. So we fought the effort to privatize. And it was really interesting that the main defenders of Social Security were the people who were already on it, and there was no danger they would lose it. But I can remember somebody at one of our town hall meetings getting up and saying, "I'm on Social Security. I know what it's meant in my life. And I want to be sure that when my kids come along and need it, that it will be there." Thank you for mentioning it. We defeated that effort, and I was proud to be kind of the leader in the House to defeat it. Thank you.
Thank you. I could keep you here all night asking for stories, but thank you very much, Mr. Levin. We appreciate the report on the appropriations bill. And as always, you're always welcome to contact me, staff, or any members of council for any project you need help on. We're happy to provide research and data for you, so you can get the job done and take care of all of us. Thank you, sir.
You did with the COPS program.
Great.
And we'll compare photos, and if you don't have...
This is your copy. I'm giving you a copy.
Thank you for everything you do.
This is the Life of Time of your uncle, David Kroll, written by my cousin, Senator Grafstein. And I thought you might like a copy of it. It's very long, so I'm not going to read it. But he was a big influence, Senator Grafstein. We'll talk.
Thank you. Sandy, if I can just speak for a moment, I just can't tell you how much your presence as our congressman has meant to our city. You are featured several times in this book. And I know I've given you a copy, but I'll give you another one. But I wanted to say, we could not have been the city we have been without your help. And knowing that you were there, speaking on our behalf constantly, you have brought so many programs to our city and so many funding, I just, I can't even know the count. But it's, you have helped us so much in our city. I do want to thank you so much. That was Janet Reno that was there. And our police officer, police chief then, was Ronald Pierce. Yes, and so, that is in here. George Suarez was our mayor. Yep. And all the council people that were present at the time were there in the photo. So please take this and keep an extra copy. Oh, yes, I will do that. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Levin.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
If I may add to, we talked a lot about all of the work that you've done for our city. The one thing that I think that we can't ever forget is the great flood of 2014. And, you know, I had personally just been elected, I think nine months earlier than that. It was a disaster, economic in nature, health crisis, and you single-handedly led the charge to make sure that our residents, a lot of us included, were able to get relief and to be able to take care of that. And so, I appreciate that. I know we appreciate that, and our residents certainly do. I know the work that you put in. I mean, you were boots-on-the-ground, I think, the next day here. So we very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. The meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any subject? Mr. Capizo? Yes, please. Meeting is still open to the public. Mr. Capizo, this is for you to address City Council. Mr. Levin will speak with you privately in the hallway, but please direct your comments to council.
I was going to ask him to address an issue, but all right.
Okay. Would anyone else like to address City Council? All right, no one else is asked to be recognized, so we'll continue on in our agenda. We have a communication. It's Item C1. It's a resignation from the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Ms. Marsh, could you give a report?
Yes, Senior Citizens Advisory Board Member Ed Madiow has verbally submitted his resignation from the board effective this past February. Staff and I recommend that the council accept the resignation and declare the seat vacant.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we accept the resignation, declare the seat vacant, and issue the appropriate letter of recognition.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Support.
Thank you. There was a motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Mark Bliss, seconded by Counselor Grafstein, to accept the resignation of Ed Madiow, declare the seat vacant, and issue a letter of appreciation. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We'll continue. We have two reports tonight. D1 is a report from the city manager regarding the sale of property on West Harwood. Ms. Marsh?
MDOT has notified the city that they will be taking 683 West Harwood, a non-buildable triangular parcel approximately 30 feet by 108 feet by 112 feet, as part of the upcoming widening of I-75. This parcel is owned by the city. In accordance with state law, the city has received formal notice from MDOT that they are authorized to acquire this property by voluntary purchase or by involuntary condemnation. MDOT's good faith written offer to purchase this property was $4,500, which compares favorably to Oakland County's 2018 true cash value of $2,505. MDOT represents that this is independently appraised market value of the property. Staff's analysis of this MDOT taking indicates that the proposed $4,500 compensation for 683 West Harwood is reasonable. MDOT is proceeding with demolition of the properties that they have purchased for the I-75 widening takings, with demolitions completed on 14 parcels. MDOT has confirmed that no force condemnation process was required for any of the needed Madison Heights properties. Accordingly, staff and the city attorney's office and I recommend that council approve the sale of 683 West Harwood to the Michigan Department of Transportation in the amount of $4,500, subject to the city attorney's review of all closing documents, and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement and closing documents on behalf of the city. Pursuant to Section 12.1 of the city charter, five affirmative votes are required.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scott.
Yes, I move that council approves the sale of 683 West Harwood to the Michigan Department of Transportation in the amount of $4,500, and subject to the city's attorney's review of all closing documents, and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement and closing documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Second.
Thank you. It was a motion made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Counselor Grafstein, to approve the sale of 683 West Harwood to the Michigan Department of Transportation in the amount of $4,500, subject to the city attorney's review of all closing documents, and further to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement and closing documents on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries six to zero. Thank you. We added a report tonight. That will be Item D2. It's a report from the Assistant City Attorney regarding pending litigation. Is there a report, or should we just go to the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Technically, there is not a report. I would just go right to the motion.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we adopt the recommendation of the Assistant City Attorney and Special Environmental Counsel made in closed session regarding Sacra versus the city of Madison Heights in Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to adopt the recommendation of the Assistant City Attorney and Special Environmental Counsel that was made in the special meeting earlier tonight regarding the civil action between Sacra and the city of Madison Heights in Oakland Circuit. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Scott, I'm sorry.
I must abstain.
Okay. I'll recognize the abstention, so the motion passes five to zero with one abstention.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes that. So we can continue on the agenda to minutes. Would someone please bring a motion regarding the first set of minutes?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we approve the minutes of the Special City Council Budget Workshop meeting of 3/6/18, as printed.
Very well. Is there support? Support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis?
Support, please.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Bliss, supported by Councilman Soltis, to adopt as printed the meeting minutes from the Special Council Budget Workshop of March 6, 2018. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. A motion for the second set of minutes, please.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the Special City Council meeting of 3/12/18, as printed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Second.
Thank you. A motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Counselor Grafstein, to adopt as printed the meeting minutes from the special meeting of 3/12/18. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I please have a motion for the third set of minutes?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm on a roll. I move that we adopt the meeting minutes of the regular council meeting of 3/12/18, as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Second.
Very well. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, and seconded by Counselor Grafstein, to adopt as printed the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of 3/12/18. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All the motions carried. All right, we can move on to appointments to boards and commissions. I'll get the ball rolling. There's a mayor's appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board. So would someone from council please accept my appointment of Earl Stone? He would be reappointed to a two-year term on the Parks Board to retire, to expire 4/15/2020. Would someone please make a motion to accept that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis?
Support.
Thanks. A motion was made by Councilman Gettings, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to approve the mayor's appointment of Earl Stone to a two-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board on a term expiring April 15, 2020. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Counsel, there was an applicant to the library board, I believe. I don't know if you have that in front of you tonight.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we appoint Alexander Bedd to the Library Advisory Board, a term that expires 7/1/18.
When does it expire?
7/1/18.
Really?
That's what I have.
Okay. That's fine. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Counselor Grafstein, to appoint Alexander Bedd to the Library Advisory Board, to a term expiring 7/1/18. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. I'm not going to make any more mayor's appointments tonight, so are there any other nominations from council this evening? Okay, hearing none. We do not have an executive session planned, so before we adjourn the meeting, I would invite any closing comments from members of council and staff. And so, I'd like to begin with Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm not used to going first. Normally, Councilman Corbett would go first here. And I wanted to give a little update. I know he announced at the last meeting that he was undergoing surgery. We've heard that he's doing really well after his surgery, and so, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with him in his recovery, and I wish...
and prayers are with him in his recovery, and I wish him a speedy recovery so he can get back here and, you know, go first from now on. Another thing I want to talk about, our Arts and Culture Board has been very hard at work since they were created in putting together their first program, which is going to be a citywide photo contest. The URL to go to is the city's website, madison-heights.org backslash photo contest. We are starting to take submissions as of tomorrow. Very exciting. Any resident of any age, from serious photographers to camera phone enthusiasts, anybody's going to be able to take part in the contest. You can submit for six different categories. Those are nature, places, animals, people, public safety, and schools. The photos have to be taken within the city, but they can be taken at any time since the city was founded. And so historical photos can absolutely fit, anything that fits within those categories. Now, what's great is we're going to have winners from each category, three finalists from each category, as selected by a panel of professional photographers, are going to be formally recognized by the city council, honored at a public exhibit, and included in an 18-month city calendar that's going to run from July 1, 2018, to December 31, 2019. In addition, the top three winners overall, across all the categories, are going to receive cash prizes of $250 for first place, $200 for second place, and $150 from third place, all of which was generously donated by local businesses and residents who will be honored both in the calendar as well as in an exhibition that we're doing. So some dates to remember, tomorrow is going to be the first day that submissions will be accepted. May 14, at 11:59 PM, will be the last day that they'll be accepted. On June 14, here in City Hall, we're going to do an art exhibit that's going to announce the winners, which I think is really fitting, that the first big program of the Arts and Culture Board is here in City Hall to be able to showcase the city's commitment and focus on expanding arts and cultural programming within our city. And then, because it's important to the arts board that we bring the art to the people, we're going to move the exhibit during the festival in the park. So inside the JC building during the fireworks festival, we are going to have all of the winners there, and we'll also have a couple of surprises, so you should definitely pop over when you're in the park for the fireworks. So we're really excited. We hope that everybody watching, everybody that's here today, and anybody that hopefully you share this to on Facebook, will submit into the contest. We're hoping to have quite a few submissions, and then there's a lot of additional ideas of ways that we can expand this program, and new ideas from the Arts and Culture Board. They've really done a great job. I'm excited about what this initial program is going to be, but even more excited about all of the future programming that this will help us to fund. So please submit, spread the word. It's going to be a lot of fun. That's it, your honor.
Great. Mr. Gettings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to, I should say, I hope Councilman Corbett has a speedy recovery and joins us back soon. I heard, as Mark did, that things went well, so again, I hope he has a speedy recovery. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I want to echo the comments of Mayor Pro Tem Bliss and also Councilman Gettings on wishing Bob Corbett a complete and speedy recovery. So far, so good. According to his family, he's doing extremely well, and everything went as had hoped today with his surgery. Secondly, I would like to mention the fact that many council members and staff members attended a birthday celebration for my dad last week, who turned 90 on Friday, on March 23. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you publicly for your beautiful comments, and I want to thank the mayor and council for a wonderful 90th birthday resolution for my dad. The party was a real tribute to him. He's been in business building light industrial buildings in Madison Heights and other communities for 50 years now, and he had all of his tradespeople, the plumbers, the electricians, the masonry people, the carpenters, and you name it, all walks of life present. Many of those trades are their second generation, and he has such a loyal group of trades that work for him. And it was an open-mic forum, so a lot of beautiful comments from those workers and his, the brokers who bring them deals, and his partners. And it was just a real celebration of a great career. And as I said at the luncheon, you know, his secret sauce is the fact that at 90, he's working every day. That's what keeps him young, and that's what keeps him going. And he looks forward to going into work every single day and making deals and buying property and building buildings and leasing and mortgaging buildings. And as they say, you know, a person that loves his job never works a day in their lives, and that's really true of our dad. He's just a very special person, and as everyone witnessed last week, how much he's loved by the people that he works with, it was really something. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Marsh?
No comments tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Prince?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Grafstein?
Yes, I would just like to update everybody on the environmental commission. We met this morning for the first time in years, and we're looking at a few different things. The first thing we're going to be looking at is recycling. We're looking at grants to get the large totes, or what are called the large toters. And down the road, we're looking at doing trees, and we're looking at food waste, and there's a lot of other things. But right now, we're looking at the recycling. And one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing is including as many people in the community as we can, and hopefully include some of the high school students as well. And I just want to echo the sentiments that I hope to see Councilman Corbett back here shortly. He's doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to recognize Councilman Corbett, my longtime associate on the council here. And he went into the surgery in good shape, and all prognostices were about to be well, and that's the way it turned out. And I'm in communication with his wife, Linda, and she tells me that things are going fine as expected, and he should have a good recovery. Knowing him, he'll be back, maybe sooner than expected. But as for our dear, what I would call patriarch of our city, Eddie Sherman, I wanted to recognize his 90th birthday and all the contributions he's made to our city. If you don't know the story, in 1967, after we had the riots here in the Detroit area, Eddie came forward and bought a huge chunk of property in our city at the northeast corner, 14 Mile and DeQuinder, and he has developed it into a showplace, one of the prettiest places in Madison Heights, but especially one of the most effective places where you can find employees that have been there for years, that do good jobs. We have wonderful companies. He treats his employees with great respect. And I think his wife, Esther, who passed away shortly ago, just adored him and him also. But I think the best thing that Esther and Eddie did was to give us Eddie, I'm sorry, to give us Larry and Jeff Sherman and their entire family, their also their brother, Michael. But they have been equally as valuable in our city as Eddie has been, and I wanted to thank the whole Sherman family for all their contributions. Please drive through that area. You'll see a street named Sherman Drive, also his partner, Kemp Drive, is there. And please see how nice that area is and all that it's done for our city, but thank you again. One request was that I wanted to announce the fact that SEMCOG, which is the Southeast Michigan Council of Government, which we have been a member of for a long time, helps our city enormously with everything we do in terms of engineering and planning and making network connections with so many vital people in the seven county region that SEMCOG surrounds. It's all in southeast Michigan. I wanted to tell you that they are celebrating their 50th anniversary this year. And if you think back in 50 years ago, for those that are older to experience that, that was the year that the Tigers won the World Series in 1968. So you'll be amazed, in fact, how they have incorporated that theme into their display. It's at the Detroit Historical Museum, and it's only going to be there until April the 8th. It's been there for about a month, but on April 8th, it will be closing. And I think it would do well for you to go see all the effect that SEMCOG has on our area and what it's done for Madison Heights. They are amazing, and I would like to order a proclamation in terms of celebrating their 50th anniversary. And they also presented with us a beautiful tile that we will display here at City Hall, commemorating that event. So thank you very much. And please go in there on spring vacation. Again, they're open till April 8th, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Marjina. Of course, we'll issue a proclamation, and your input will be very important in the language so we can properly thank and honor SEMCOG. Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I just want to talk briefly on a somber topic that, you know, I appreciate the congressman coming here tonight, but I really wanted to ask him, what is Congress going to do about the gun murders of our children in our own schools? You know, this weekend, I watched on C-SPAN that huge march in Washington, DC with hundreds of thousands of school kids and their families protesting and speaking out. I couldn't believe the power that was generated. And we're in other areas in all the states as well. Speakers ranged from all different ages, from middle schools to high schoolers, that all had the same passion and courage that I completely admire, and I think everybody else should too. The fact that this tragedy continues to happen over and over again, I think Congress needs to step up and do something about it. I just wanted to speak on that briefly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also wish Councilman Corbett a speedy recovery and a safe path back to his chair in council chambers. He's a very important voice in any of our debates. And I've done this two meetings in a row. I keep telling people to stop talking. I did it to Councilor Grafstein like 100 times two weeks ago, but I did it to Jim Capizo. Jim, I'm so sorry I interrupted you during public comment. I'll reopen the floor. First, you can criticize me, but then you can get, state whatever issue you wanted to talk about. Okay. Well, I'm sorry, Jim. I meant no disrespect. I just was trying to keep the ball rolling, and I rolled over you instead. Obviously, public input's very important, and a lively debate on council is very important. So I'll do a better job of looking you guys in the eye and not staring at the clock sometimes. But Larry, thank you so much for inviting members of council to your father's 90th birthday party. It was an honor for me to present council's proclamation to him, and it just gave me the chills looking at his history, his curriculum vitae of building our city. It's truly remarkable what he's done with progress in industry, but also, I mean, what a joy to see his children, you and your brothers and grandchildren, now great-grandchildren. I mean, they really are a chip off the old block. Your father should be proud of what he's accomplished personally, and it's just so nice to be around him and learn from him and study his ways and laugh at his jokes. So please tell Ed he's always welcome back. Red carpet service for that man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank Councilwoman Scott for the comments she made at the luncheon as well as tonight. You know, it's, you know, for us, the city and the people we work with make it family for us. We couldn't, we couldn't work with better people and have a better job than doing what we do here. So I really, I really appreciate all of the sentiments, and I know, I know that my dad does also. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, great. I'll leave it on that. Is there any other business before City Council this evening? All right, hearing none. The meeting is adjourned. Good evening.